Have a special guest, so I'm gonna...
Is your mic on?
Your mic's not on.
Oh, your mic is. Turn your mic on.
It's on.
It is.
Okay. Now it is.
There we go.
So, we are going to open up regular session and Chief, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready? DJ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll have a moment of silence. I appreciate that moment. I hope you all are remembering the reason for the season and all the good things that come with the love and the care of this community, so thank you. We're going to have a report now from the city attorney.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. The board met in closed session, I'm sorry, the city council met in closed session to discuss three items. All of them are potential litigation. The first one was undisclosed parties. The city council received a report from the city attorney regarding this matter, but no disclosable action took place. Regarding the second matter and the third matter, it's essentially the same report. The city council received a report from the city attorney, but no reportable action took place. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any other?
I don't.
I don't think we do.
Oh, yes, I do. One other thing. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas back. Okay, the next item is presentations. Are any of the people who are receiving these awards here?
Well, two of them are.
Yeah, I know those two are. Okay, well then, please join us up at the podium.
And if you, you three, you two would give out the five awards?
Thank you.
All right, the first is for recognition of service. I'd like to call up Michael Atkins, if he is here. If not, then I will read this for him. This certificate is awarded to Michael Atkins in recognition of 15 years' service to the city of Ridgecrest, and it is signed by the mayor and our city manager. So, Michael, thank you. We will give this to you and see to it that you get it. Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Gary Parsons, recognition of service. This certificate is awarded to Gary Parsons. Gary, come on up. In recognition of 15 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Wait, Gary, wait. We all have to say thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Good job.
It seems a little longer than everyone.
And Mr. Nicholas Humphrey, is he here this evening? No? With Parks and Rec, recognition of service. This is in recognition of 10 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. So, Nicholas, Merry Christmas. Thank you for your great service, and we'll see to it that you get your award very soon. Thank you. All right, Lindsey?
Okay. I'd like to recognize Ron Bell. I don't believe he's here. For five years of his service to the police department. Thank you for that. And Mr. Bill Groves, for 10 years of service also to the police department. And then, last but definitely not least, Mr. Dennis Spear, in recognition of his 10 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest, so...
Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. A public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. And I really see somebody coming up his feet. And would you state your name, please, sir? And ma'am? And the elf?
Mrs. Claus.
Little louder, little louder.
Mrs. Claus.
Mr. Claus, who is known as Santa.
And I'm Freddie the Elf.
These three were wonderful enough to attend on Balsam Street last, no, two weekends ago, and we gave presents and listened to the kids sit on that elf's, the old elf's, lap and tell them what they wanted for Christmas. And so, I know that you may have some words to say, old elf? Or young elf? Or Mrs. Claus?
We were asked to join you tonight, Madam Mayor, and our wonderful council members, and we heard you've been very good this year, including you, Wallace, and so we're here to hand out some Christmas goodies. And so, if we may, Freddie, our wonderful little elf here, would like to hand out some Christmas cheer.
Thank you so much. We appreciate this.
We third the motion.
And I know none of you will be crass enough to ask who Santa is, because we all know who he is. He's a resident of the North Pole.
That's exactly right.
Do you have your glasses on, Santa?
Thank you, thank you, Santa. Hot dog.
Merry Christmas, children.
Don't talk too much. We know who you are.
You didn't leave.
So, thank you, you jolly old elf and Mrs. Claus and the, what is your name, Mr. Elf?
Freddie.
Freddie the Elf.
Freddie the Elf.
Thank you, Freddie. Thank you. We appreciate you all coming, and thank you very much. Okay, after we've had pretty wonderful public comment, is there any other public comment? Okay, oh, okay?
Wow, what a tough act to follow, but at least I got a hug from Mrs. Claus. Anyway, I hope you enjoyed your first day of winter. Maybe it's also going to be the first day of our flood season, who knows? But I hate to complain, but I just have to, because there's something that's been going on with the Adobe Acrobat system that we get the agendas emailed or put on the web with, and I don't know what it is, and I'm not sure anybody in the city knows what it is. But I have to point it out, because it does not act consistently every time, every issue. Normally, I should be able to call it up, go down to an item on the agenda, click on that item, and then it'll automatically put me back to the supporting material. On this week's, it did not. And I tried everything to figure out, and there's no really good instruction book that I've found. If there's one out there, please let, have somebody let me know, because it's very frustrating. I had to scroll down 65 pages to get to the one that I wanted to look at today. And that should not be. So, I don't know if it's something on whoever, I forget who makes Acrobat, but on their end, whether it's on the city's end or whether it's on my computer. But if anybody has any ideas, I'd sure love to have some help on it. So, I guess I'll leave it at that. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Dave, Rick seems to have an answer for you.
Yeah, Dave, hold on one second.
Mr. Matthews, I'm the one that puts the agenda together, and I did do the links, and I double-checked them in my version, and they worked.
They worked on mine also.
The only thing I could suggest is that maybe you don't have an updated version that does that anymore. I'm not sure, but they did work.
Okay.
I apologize, but...
I never know which version I've got, because I got a Mac, and they just throw stuff in there whenever I'm not even looking, so...
Generally, you can click on the Help menu dropdown, and there'll be an update link there that you can do, so you could try it and look at it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we come to council announcements. Lindsey?
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and thanks for coming tonight, so...
I will second that motion. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
I will do the same, and thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent calendar. I know we were told last week that I didn't need to read them any longer, but I've heard from people who did not have the agenda in front of them, who were watching on television and couldn't figure out what we were doing, so I am going to read the consent calendar. So, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the cassette calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have the item pulled? Any item pulled? Any people from the public?
Five.
Number five. Okay, I'm going to read all of them, and we will then... Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the city of Ridgecrest City Council's successor redevelopment agency financing authority housing authority meeting dated 12/07. Proposed action number three, proposed action to approve a resolution of the city council of city of Ridgecrest authorizing the city manager execute agreement with the State Board of Equalization for implementation of a local transaction and use tax. Number four, proposed action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Ridgecrest authorizing examination of sales and use tax records. And five, proposed action to approve contract change order 10, contract change order number 11, and contract change order 12 with an increase in the amount of $55,275.11 with contractor JTS Construction for the transit garage facility, and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to sign change order number 10, change order number 11, and change order number 12. We have asked to pull item number five. I have a question on item number three. So, I would like to pull three and five. If there are no objections, we will, I'll entertain a motion for approval of two and four.
I'll make that motion to approve two and four.
Yep, I'll second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Three ayes, two absent, motion carries.
Item number three. Ty, could you explain the reason for this? I'm not sure I understood it even after I read it, and I don't think I'm the dumbest person in the world, but it was really hard to understand what the purpose of this was.
Sure. This is an agreement between the city and the Board of Equalization that allows the Board of Equalization to set up the sales tax and then to administer the collection and distribution of the sales tax. We have the same current agreement with Measure L, where the Board of Equalization administers that. There's a cost, of course, that comes to that. It's been less than 1 percent, and is that clear enough, or is there...
Okay, well, the only thing, now, was this the one where it said Measure L, but it really was Measure V?
No, I believe that's the next one.
That's the next one. Okay, all right. Okay, because why did we need to look at the tax? Do we look at individual tax records? What is it we're looking at?
Sure, this, for number four now, is that what you're asking?
That was number three.
Number three is just the setup and the administration of the local use tax, Measure V.
Okay, so we don't have access, like, if you want to see how much anybody's paying, you don't have access to that? You have access to the total?
I currently do for the Bradley Burns amount and the Measure L, but we do not have access for the Measure V. That's what item four was for.
The next one is, yeah, okay. Okay, well then, I guess I understand it, so is there, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor, I don't think you had public comment on that one before you took action.
I'm sorry, was there any public comment on that item? My apology if you did. Thank you. I'll try to remember that.
So, three ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Now, item five.
Yeah, actually, I'm here on behalf of myself, as well as Skip Gorman, who's, he's too rash for the poll. We're wondering why there's such an increase. We just had an increase in this contract last meeting, and now we've got another one. What's going on?
Those are changes...
I'm sorry.
Those are changes that actually happened, like so. Those are changes that occur in the field during the construction, the construction of the project, of the new bus garage, and those have been first submitted by the contractor to our construction manager, who has looked at those and reviewed those with our city engineer, and those are changes that are necessary for us to complete the project.
What's the whole project going to cost us now?
You know, I forgot the amount. It's around $750.
I'm sorry, what?
I think it's around $750, or maybe it's $820. I don't have that exact amount with me. But hold on just a second. I believe on those change orders, now, it's very small numbers, but I believe that's indicated... Oh, excuse me. It's, now, I need to go to 12 to get the final amount. The original contract was $1,352,740. That's increased by about $50,000 to $1,409.57. That's on the last page, contract change order number 12, which will be the last change order. It indicates what the original contract amount was, what the prior change order amounts were, both negative and positive, and then with this latest increase, that brings the revised contract amount to $1,409,057.67.
Can you clarify how much of that was covered by a grant and where the other portion of funding is coming from?
Do you have the breakdown on that? The largest part is covered by a grant, by Prop 1B, and the remainder is covered by TDA.
Yeah, so it's not coming from the general fund. I wanted to make that clear, because I had that discussion. I asked that question to him when I met with him.
Yeah, there's no general fund money involved in this project.
Regardless of where it comes from, I don't know why we, unless there's really something drastic going on, or something was underbid, or something to start with, I don't see why we have all these change orders. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other council comment? Okay, motion?
Motion for approval of number five?
Second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Three ayes, two absent, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the Planning Commission, council committees, boards, and commissions. How we did this is the way we did it the first year I was here, is asking those who wanted to serve on a particular committee to let me know, and first come, first served. And I heard immediately from Mike and Eddie. Lindsey called me, and then I heard from Wallace. So, I am going to say what I believe you all said, and then if there's any changes or I have not got it correct, please let me know. Okay? This is small writing. Okay, the Planning Commission, each council member nominates a commissioner. I nominated Solomon Roger Rotman. Eddie nominated Cecil Yates, and Mike Maur nominated Warren Cox. Lindsey, your nomination?
I nominate Jim Sanders for Planning Commission.
And Wallace?
And I'm nominating Cameron Bruce for my appointment.
Okay, we have all those, and you have the paperwork from all those people who agreed to serve. Is that correct?
I do.
Okay. If, nobody has any objection, I'd like to do this all in one fell swoop, we'll approve them all unless somebody has an objection. Is that okay with anybody? Is that a problem?
What happens if we run into a problem? Is it better to do it?
Well...
Well, we can say.
You can do it however you want to do it. The municipal code says that the mayor makes the appointments with the advice and consent of the city council, so I assume one way to handle that is the mayor can put these all out together in the form of a nomination, and if there's a motion and a second for the whole package, you guys could, you guys can adopt it. Would be one way to do it, and if it, otherwise, you could do it item by item, but that could get kind of tedious.
I'd like to do it that way. I think it's going to be more efficient than trying to do every item separate, and if you have questions before we approve, you can always ask the specific questions on that. The next one is Personnel Commission. Each council member nominates a commission member. I nominated Janice Bodorf. I do not have a nomination from Eddie, nor do I have a nomination from Mike. Do I have a nomination from Lindsey and Wallace?
Yes, I nominate Sean King for Personnel Committee.
Okay.
And I'm nominating Diana Eggleton.
Okay, everybody has their information here. If any of you would like to have us describe those people and their qualifications, we'd be happy to do that. Okay, the next item is the Construction...
Could we do that now? Could I mention one person?
Sure.
Okay, I would like, because he's here, and I'd like to recognize, I guess, you know, one of the things, when I was, during the campaign, I kind of made a point that I really wanted to more tap into our tremendous intellectual capital on the base and to try to get more outstanding people involved with the city, because I think it's good for the base and good for the city. And I'm very proud and pleased. I'd like to read a real quick executive summary of Mr. Cameron Bruce. Cameron is a licensed professional engineer, vast proven experience in executive-level planning, I need to talk right into this thing, regulating and developing policies, procedures for a wide variety of programs. He has provided technical managerial, financial oversight for organizations and projects involving more than 1,000 engineers, with budgets exceeding $500 million. His education includes a BS in electrical engineering and MS in administration. He's currently pursuing an MBA with emphasis on entrepreneurship through California Lutheran University. He's here with us tonight. I'm very proud to nominate him for my appointment for Planning Commission. Cameron, don't you stand up. He's in the back. Thank you, Cameron.
Very nice to see you here, Cameron. I've known you a long time also, very proud to have you applying for that position. Okay, the next one is Construction Appeals Board. I nominated Mike Ferguson. You have his paperwork. Did any of you have anybody else?
I nominate David Switzer.
And Wallace?
I don't have one right now.
Okay, we're not going to be able to totally fill that committee, because both Eddie and Mike have not given us, have they?
No.
Okay, have not given us, so we won't totally fill that committee. The Handicap Access Appeals Board Municipal Code requires two members to be physically handicapped, two members experienced in construction, and one member as a public member. I nominated Ginny DeAngelis from DART.
I nominate Brian Voight as the physically handicapped, one of the physically handicapped members.
Okay.
And I'm very proud to nominate Ryan Smith also as one of the physically handicapped. He's an outstanding young man who many of us know. He's been very active in the community, also worked at CoL Banker, worked at Navy Federal, and outstanding young man, so I'm proud.
Okay. Do you have paperwork from all those people? Ricka?
I do have them. Is your member the member of the public or one of the construction people?
Ginny DeAngelis is a member of the public.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the Action Committee. Eddie Thomas served on it last year. We have an opening as an alternate. Is anyone interested in that alternate on the Action Committee? We served last year with alternate.
So, it doesn't...
It's not demanded, but it's good to have somebody there to work with him.
Okay. So, that's, so two council and two planning commissioners, what it says, but you're saying it's only one council and one alternate?
Well, we, that's the way we have it set up here.
Okay. You can, I can do that one.
Okay, Lindsey? Okay. The next item is the Ridgecrest Area Visitors and Convention Bureau, two council appointments. Eddie Thomas asked to serve on that again, and Wallace has indicated he would like to serve on that.
Yes.
Okay, the Veterans Advisory Committee, one council member and one alternate. I served on it, and I would like an alternate if there's anyone interested in that. Okay, we can leave it the way it is for one for right now. Kern Cog, Kern Council of Governance, one council appointment and one alternate. Mike Maur was last year, and he indicated, the last two years, and indicated he'd like to serve, and Wallace has volunteered to be the alternate. Okay, Navy Community Council, mayor and one alternate. I have, I have the, I served last year as the mayor, and is there anyone who would like to serve on that as the alternate? Okay, we can leave it blank. We didn't have one last year. IWV Groundwater, I am, I am the person who's been...
What?
Pardon me?
That's incomplete. What is it?
Committee. The ad hoc committee and also the groundwater management committee for the GSA. Is that sufficient, Dave, or do you need more?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that was me, and Mike Maur asked to be the alternate.
All right.
Okay?
If that's open, I mean, can we comment?
Sure.
Okay, I would really like to serve as the alternate if I could be allowed to do so.
Well, Mike asked... Well, Mike asked first, and so, unless, that's the way we've always worked it. And so what you can do, you're more than welcome to come to those meetings, Wallace, and, and you just can't speak.
That's impossible.
I'm sorry, sir, but that, that is the way we have had it set up.
Actually, he, as long as, because the alternate doesn't sit on the board, it's not like a committee, so... And it's a, it's a meet, it's not a meeting of a sub-agency of the city, it's a separate public entity. So actually, I believe, I'd have to double check, but I think you could attend and speak.
Okay, as, as also...
As, just, you know, as a, not, not from the board position, obviously, but...
Okay, all right, okay.
So I could be an alternate, a speaking alternate?
No.
No?
No, it's not, it wouldn't be the alternate position, I'm saying you could attend those meetings.
You could attend them and speak.
And speak.
Okay.
All right.
I think we've had members of the...
Yeah.
We've had members of the, uh, Water District that are not on the board come and do that, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Okay, we have it listed as a Finance Committee, and it meets with Finance and Kern Cog. I mean, sorry, Finance and the Org Committee. And, um, Mike asked to serve on that, and I served on that too, so Mike, both Mike and I served on it last year, and we both asked to serve on it again, and that would be also the Org Committee. Okay, the Youth Advisory Council, Eddie Thomas asked to stay on that. Civilian and Military Affairs, that's me, and Wallace asked to serve on that. East Kern Air Pollution Control District, I've served on it, so I asked to serve again. We have a Senior Advisory Council who's gone to Quality of Life, Arts Council to Quality of Life, and Quad State. Mike and Steve Morgan served on that last year. Steve, Mike was Steve's alternate. I have not heard whether Steve, I sent him an email asking if he wanted to continue to serve, and I have not heard back. So Mike, um, did not want to be the, um, lead one, he wanted to be the alternate. So if anybody, I have not heard back from Steve, so can we leave that vacant for this point in time? Do we hear back from Steve? Okay, League of California Cities, Wallace asked to be the lead on that, and is there anyone who would like to serve as the alternate?
Was Mike on that before, or is he not wanting to do that?
He, he did, the only, actually, it was myself and Jim.
Okay.
And so I, it's a lot of out-of-town meetings. It's a lot of travel and going to meetings, and it's very important. And I think that we need some people who are willing to give the time and the work to that. So, um, while, Lindsay, did you want to serve?
Um, I'll think about that if you are, he's, you have the one you need.
We have, we have the primary one, okay. All right, Disaster Affairs. Disaster Council, um, and that's, uh, appointments set by municipal code. It's the mayor, the city manager, the chief of police, and any other emergency service personnel. So that would stay as it is. Okay, we have no one for the BLM Roundtable. That's an extremely important one because there's so much that's going on. Lori served that last year, and I have had no volunteers for that. Okay, we can hold that off for a little bit, till we see if we come up with somebody. That's the same that the Energy Conservation, they worked in conjunction with the BLM on that. Okay, um, the Infrastructure Committee, Mike wanted to continue to serve, and Lindsay asked if she could go on that again. So those are the two on that committee. City Org, that was Mike and me. And Parks and Rec, Quality of Life, Eddie Thomas, and Wallace asked to serve on that.
No, I asked to serve.
Lindsay did, I think.
Lindsay, okay, my apologies. All right, those are all the committees that I have listed. Is there anybody who would like to discuss any of them?
I just, I would like to discuss, it just, um, as we were going through the list, it, it just appears to me that it's not really a balance, um, on who's sitting on some of these committees, and I, I don't think that's how it should be. I know the first come, first served can work in theory, but it seems like it should also be a little bit more balanced. Since there's five of us up here, we should make sure that, like, if there's internal committees and then there's external ones, that it's kind of balanced that we have people sitting on internal and external committees, and, um, it doesn't seem like that's the way this is panning out right now. So I just thought that maybe we should give that some attention because some of these committees require a lot, like the groundwater, the city org, the finance, and if we have the same people sitting on all of those, are we making sure that all of them are going to get the attention that they need? If it's the same people sitting on all of them, and they require a lot of effort, and so that was one...
Do you think they did not get the effort that they was needed last year?
Well, I just...
I'm not, I'm not trying to be...
Right.
Argumentative, I'm trying to see what you would propose that would make people have more time.
Right, what I was proposing is that you would evenly distribute the committees if, if, like, the, my understanding was the city org and finance, um, Lori actually sat on those up until like a month or two ago because her time wouldn't allow them. And so, um, you volunteered to step in for her to fill those, and so it just seems like maybe we should, instead of doing the first come, first served, also evaluate how many other committees the people are already sitting on and make sure that it's evenly distrib, more evenly distributed, is all I was asking to take a look at. Because I know I had asked for a couple of other ones, but you had said, you know, well, those have already been asked for by the other people, and so, um, and I had just been encouraged by members of the public to, that I, that they thought I would do well on certain committees, but then they were already filled, and so...
You certainly can come to those committee meetings.
Yeah, it doesn't, the Brown Act, while it's very helpful at times, it also is a little too restrictive, and so not being able to ask any questions at a meeting, um, really makes going to the meeting not very helpful.
How has that been addressed in the past, staff?
Are you talking about the participation at the meetings? Is that the question, in the Brown Act?
Meeting assignments, committee assignments. I was told this is how we did it in the past.
How were they delegated in the past?
Yes.
Uh, well, I don't remember the first come, first served thing, to be honest with you.
That was what I was told last year when I came.
Yeah.
Everybody got their, their...
What I recall from sitting up here was, was that they, kind of what we just did, where they would, everybody would just kind of go through them and people would, and we haven't typically had a lot of disagreement about it, I think, but, uh, we would just go through it the way you did, and people would say they were in or out, and usually, we had trouble filling all the spots, is what typically happens. That's the way I recall it being done. But, you know, again, it's, it's, uh, as, it, it's really at your discretion as the mayor, uh, under the municipal code. You're the one who makes the, the appointments and, and the rest of the board consents on those appointments.
Dennis, do you have any comment?
My recollection is similar to the city attorney's, uh, it was sort of a discussion and then a consensus. I mean, you know, stemming from the discussion, uh, kind of give and take, and then, uh, the council among themselves decided who would be on the committee.
Yeah, it's really been a very informal process.
Okay, that's why, when I first came, I asked how we did this, and said, everybody asked and said what they wanted to do, and that was the way it was done. And that is what I was hoping and thinking I'm doing.
Right, everybody took a step backwards, and the last guy who failed to move back got stuck on the committee, I think, is the way it worked.
Or, if you want it, you got the committee, yeah. I, I don't see a reason to change it if it's not, if we don't have established procedure in doing that. What, what do you think, Wallace?
I'm, I'm, is there a committee that, one of these that you are really, really wanting to, to be on and sure of owning?
I mean, I was, I was interested in the city org and/or the finance, I guess if you're saying that you automatically sit on both of, if those go hand in hand. I, I was very interested in sitting on those, especially with the, the discussion on the public meeting policies and the finance. I, I've been interested in learning more about what is happening in the finance. I know that's a relatively new ad hoc committee. So those were two that I was, um, especially...
Well, if you want to sit on the Finance Committee, I'll take, go off the Finance Committee and let you sit on that then, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right? You just never know when you're going to meet. So, because you meet at the end of the Org Committee meeting.
Right.
So you'll have to either sit through the Org and not say anything then.
Actually, I did have a question for you. Because for some reason, in my Brown Act handbook, there was a little sticky note that said temporary ad hoc committees not subject to Brown Act.
That's right.
And so...
But these are not temporary, they're not temporary, nor are they ad hoc committees we're talking about. These are standing committees established by the city council.
They call the Finance Committee an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I know. They, the, the, whether they call it an ad hoc committee or not is not dispositive as to whether or not it is an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
And the, the, the most significant question is whether they meet regularly.
Okay.
And then the second question is whether or not it was established by formal action of the city council. I think, in my opinion, both those things are true, and therefore, in my opinion, it's subject to the Brown Act.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Does that meet with your approval?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions on the committees or any other discussion? Okay, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to point out the problem with the agenda as it was published because the list that you just read off does not match the list that was in the supporting material that I picked up, uh, from the agenda. Now, I've got copies here, I was going to pass them out anyhow beforehand because some of the, some of the things like the Infrastructure Committee were not listed here, and I was questioning what was going on. But I think you've covered everything. However, there is a discrepancy in what came out and what you actually read, so...
Dave, actually, you, you are correct, and, and it was, it's, it's, nothing was intentional because I was in there when Ricka was doing it, and we caught it.
Okay, we have it here too.
So it, thank you, you, you have an incredibly eagle eye, and thank you for your conscientiousness. It, it was a oversight. Thank you.
Does that mean we cancel it?
No, I knew your, that was the next question. Remember, the, the technically what's going on here is the mayor is making the appointments, and, uh, the city council's advising and consenting, so it's really not, doesn't require, uh, agendized action. It's more of, you know, you get a head nod from the, from the city council, and then you can go ahead. So I, I think we're okay under the Brown Act.
Okay, so we have some committees that have not been filled. Were you going to get up and speak, Skip? Did I, you were just moving, okay, thank you. We have some that have not been filled, so we recognize we still have to look at those and try to fill them as we can, as quickly as we can. Sometimes these committees don't meet very often. I was asked the other day, and I was, was asked how often the Personnel Committee met, and I said, "In the two years I've been on the council, I don't think they've ever met." And it, they are on an as-needed basis, and until it's needed, they don't meet. That doesn't mean our, their service isn't appreciated for all the people willing to sit. So if nobody has an objection, I'll take a motion to approve all of the, as we've listed.
I, I'll move that we accept all of them as listed.
I'll second that.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
We have three ayes, two absent, the motion carries. And mayor, I'll just note that I'll carry this agenda item open till next meeting, and we'll try it one more time.
Please.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is item number seven, which is Discussion and Proposed Action to Provide Direction to the City's Representative on the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority Regarding Adoption of 2017 Annual Budget and Future Funding and Finance Options for the IWV GA. There was an item that was in the agenda, and, um, and I've got it here. Sorry. Okay. It was, as, as Alan Christensen said, it is a very, um, by the seat of the pants budget because until they actually get into it, there was no way to give firm, solid numbers. What they have is the county got five hundred thousand dollars from the state for groundwater management groups, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars went to this local GSA potentially, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars went to the GSA on the other side of Kern County. So that's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the DWR grant. There's in-kind services, and the city's meeting space is the fifteen hundred dollars, and then carryover from contributions is the seventy-five thousand dollars that they got from the participating entities. They have, that's a total of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. There's a number of other items that are listed, and as they said, it's simply their best guess of what it's going to be. And at some point in time, clearly, things in the agenda are, I mean, in the budget are going to be changed, made larger, made smaller, maybe eliminated. I doubt elimination, but I'm not going to say it won't.
My guess is made larger.
I'm, I'm definitely thinking it's going to be larger because as time goes on. But they wanted to be able to have a budget to get started, and I could not approve it because I didn't have direction, and the agenda did not exactly call for approval of it. So I asked for it to come back to us so you could look at it and give it approval so at the next, uh, GSA meeting, I can vote your direction. Is there any comments? Okay, motion to approve?
Public.
I'm sorry, well, I'm not trying, there, you're too, not too many out here tonight. Any, any public comment? Thank you.
Yeah, you can go ahead and, and approve it, I guess, because nobody really knows where the money is coming from. But I urge the board, that, that groundwater board, to read a letter to the editor, I think it was, a couple of weeks ago in the Daily Independent, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he quoted some actions by the base about groundwater ten, twenty years ago, I think it was, twenty years ago, God, yeah. And pointed out the fact that if we keep trying to do the same thing over and over again, we're insane. And I've, I, I, I've agreed with him for years. What this committee needs to do, along with the state of California and perhaps the federal government and the state water agencies, is to find more sources of water. Now, we've got to start already from the legislation that went through in Congress by Kevin McCarthy.
That will not affect us, sir.
So urge this board to start looking for more sources of water. The sky is one, but the way that things have been going, it's not helping very much. So there are ways we can do this, and I think in the next four years, we can, with the current administration that's going to be taking over in Washington, I think it's a very, very, uh, very probable that we can get something like that done. Thank you.
Thank you, that is the intent of this group, uh, but right now, we have the, the, the application to form the GSA has been filed with the state. We have to wait ninety days to see if anybody is going to file over that group. If it doesn't, at... If it doesn't at the end of 90 days, it becomes a, a groundwater, a, a GSA. And we develop a GSP, which is the plan to solve some of the problems as we can. Certainly, importation of water, desalination of brackish water, all sorts of opportunities are there. And in fact, the Navy just released a study that was just done, the latest study on water, saying that there's 7,700 acre feet of recharge, which is significantly less than most, all the studies say. Some, some it's just slightly less, but most of them, it is a whole lot less than what we have. And if you accept this, then we know we have a path of finding more water and growing this community. Because how we grow this community in a overdrafted basin is going to be very difficult, but it must happen, and we will. How? That's going to take a lot of cooperation for all of us. So Keith, did you want to say anything about that? Because Keith has been acting as our legal counsel on that.
Well, I think you said it very well. I mean, you'll notice one of the line items on the expenses for the proposed budget, it says GSP development. The GSP, like the mayor said, is a groundwater sustainability plan, and that is going to analyze conditions in the basin, and then presumably offer some kind of plan where we can reach sustainability. And I imagine one of the things that will be well discussed will be water sources and alternative sources, and what can be done to develop those sources. So I guess for people who are feeling like something has needed to be done for a while, they should be very excited about, about the JPA moving forward.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
I, I'm not public, but I, I had a question, something that was said, reminded me of a discussion that we had at the last meeting. And I was curious, I don't see anything on here. We discussed, and I don't know if it was brought up, having public meetings at night.
You go ahead and address.
Yeah, actually, the mayor brought that up, and there was some discussion by the board. The board, I think, directed staff to discuss how we can do that, what we can do to try to accommodate, get more public participation for meetings, and the staff is currently looking at, there's a, you know, a range of proposals, from maybe doing a, a couple test meetings at night to see if people show up, or if we get more people showing. We have a lot of people showing up now, but we might be able to get more. To maybe a proposal to have sort of the significant meetings at night, to maybe, there's also an advisory group, maybe having the advisory group at night is, is sort of the right move. So we're, we're sort of talking about how, how we can sort of get everybody to these meetings, or, or maybe some people attending telephonically, you know, we're, we're looking at all of that, so.
Okay.
And so I think staff is supposed to come back with a recommendation in January. In the meantime, we did approve a, a meeting calendar that has them all at 10 o'clock on that Thursday currently, but the understanding that the mayor made sure everybody understood was that's just tentative, and we're going to try to see if we can move some of those meetings to later at night.
Okay, thank you.
We've had between 30 and 50 people at the meetings. This last meeting was one of the, not quite so well-attended, but the first few, there was, the room was pretty well-filled. So it's not like people are, maybe it's a little inconvenient, but it's not like they're not attending. I believe they are.
Ironically, we consistently have more people at the JPA meeting attending than we do at the city council meetings at night, so make of that what you will. Maybe that just shows there'd be even more people if it was at night.
Okay, so, no more public comment, then a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion to? Actually, we don't need a motion, that, it's just direction.
Well, they're not going to give me direction? We don't need a motion for direction? Okay, that's fine.
It doesn't have to be, but you could, we could, we could do it as a motion if it would give you more comfort, so that there was clear direction.
I don't, I think I understand their direction.
Okay.
So, okay, so there is no motion. Okay, direction has been given and received. Okay, the next item is ordinances. What is that on there for?
There isn't one on there?
It's just a placeholder if there were.
A placeholder if there were, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure you weren't going to tell us something. Okay, committee reports. I don't believe any of the committees met, except the RACVB did. Did they, did they meet? Okay.
I think he gave a report at the last meeting.
Okay, all right. The RACVB met, and they, they asked if I would make sure that I read this for them. Please be advised that on this Thursday, December 22nd, there will be a SEVITIS meeting at the RACVB office at 643 North Channel Lake Boulevard, Suite C, the Rich Crest and Tourism Improvement District. If there are any inquiries and concerns, please contact Doug Luke at that. This is how they are going to form, the contract is up for the Tourism Improvement District, and they are going to go back for approval of it, and, and this is what they are letting us know that they're going to meet again.
What time was that at?
It is at 10:00 AM. Okay, did any of the other committees meet? Okay. Then, any other boards, committees, or commissions? Okay, I know we have a ton of meetings in, in January, so we will get back to the, the work there. City managers' report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just two things really to report. One is, is really a response to a request for city council to review and perhaps reconsider the water rates and the Navy's proportionate share of the costs. First, in terms of this response, I really want to remind everyone that the new wastewater treatment facility implementation plan, it contains several action steps. The most critical step at this juncture is obtaining an acceptable grant of easement from the Navy. Without it, the city cannot move forward with the site selection, with the permitting, nor the funding requests. The city is currently in discussions with the Navy regarding this easement. A review of the rates at this time would be inappropriate.
Will we be able to review them at what point in time, sir?
Well, with the, when we're able to obtain the grant of easement from the Navy.
I know in the past, we've done them in July of, are we?
Oh, the water rates themselves, oh, yes. No, those, the sewer rates, rather. They will be presented to council on, on around May, June. But the, but in terms of a reconsideration of those rates, as was requested, that is something that we really would be inappropriate, as long as we're negotiating the grant of easement with the Navy at this time.
I would like to, as soon as possible, bring it to a committee, whatever the appropriate committee would be, or to the, to a workshop with the whole council, as soon as we can do that, so we can discuss where we are. It would be, there's been allegations that the city, the Navy is not paying their fair share, and how that fair share is appropriated. I know we can't discuss this because you're discussing it with them, but I would like to discuss it as soon as possible we can.
Yeah, the awkwardness is that we're negotiating over that very topic, so we, we don't want to be airing things out, I guess, that we might be discussing privately, until we get a position where we've got a deal. I think it could interfere with our ability to negotiate.
Would that include the rates?
Their component of it.
And so you're negotiating their rates?
How much they're paying.
I'd like that to come back to us at some point in, how, I mean, I do, I...
It's a, now, for purposes of discussion tonight, you simply wanted a
I know, I asked you just to report it.
But as I've explained before, there are two, there's an agreement, there's an operations agreement, and there's a grant of easement. With that, and we, what the Navy submitted originally to us was they tried to combine the two documents. Currently, we operate, we operate that facility with an operations agreement. The operations agreement is the actual document that states how much the Navy's going to pay, and when the Navy would change payments, and how that negotiation is to take place. The grant of easement allows us to operate out there on that facility. It is a separate document that's created by reference from the operations agreement. And the, we've already been to the funding agency, the CalEPA, for the, the state revolving fund grants, we've already talked to our bond council. Whether we go out for bond, or whether we go to the state for financing, there needs to be now a separate grant of easement, and that grant of easement cannot contain any contractual language or any restrictive, prohibitive languages for us to be able to be on the new facility, if it's located on the base, for the duration of the repayment process, plus at least 10 years, which also is taken to be the life of the project. So with that in mind, our first step, and our critical step right now, is to obtain a grant of easement from the Navy that we can even locate on the, on the base at this time, without any of the restrictions that are contained in the current grants of easement. And then, following, after we do that, then there would be a negotiation of the, of an operations agreement that would be associated with the new facility. And then that's the document where the, where the, the rates and how much the Navy pays could perhaps be discussed. And I believe that document, when it, at least has evolved, that's something that probably could go to committee.
Okay, I'd like to see it do that, thank you. Okay, then you were giving, were you, did you finish your report, sir?
Oh, the second thing, oh, I'm sorry, maybe even more important than most people, is the, the fact that we did close our recruitment for the Community Development Tech position. That was on the 15th. We received 28 applications. I think we've, we've shortlisted it to maybe 10 that we're going to call in for interviews. We hope to make a hire early in January.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay, that's it? Okay. Future agenda items. Nancy?
I have some. I'd like to request the casino update be put on the next agenda. The Economic Development Committee discussion and action, I would like to make this a discussion and action item on the proposal of having an economic development committee. And then I'd also like to discuss the possibility of us having a workshop, a brainstorming session on revenue for the council.
Do we want to just limit it to revenue?
Well, I, I don't know, I was, do we have to limit it? I was confused by that conversation a little bit, if it has to be on a certain topic, or if it can be more open.
You're, well, we're now talking about talking about
Right.
A workshop. So, no, you can, I mean, the workshop can be, it just has to be stated clearly enough that the public knows what the topic is going to be.
Okay, so maybe I'll just list it as a discussion item, and having a workshop possibly, whether that be, because we had talked one time about goals, we've talked about revenue, and then I think you have something you want to talk about as well, so just a placeholder for that. But I would like to see all three of those on the next meeting agenda, for sure. Please, thank you.
Wallace?
Oh, yes, I second, yep. Is this a, is this a, no, it just
No, no, you're just saying future agenda items.
No, I don't, I don't have any right now.
Okay. In the Western City Magazine, a, it was the month of November, there was how effective, article, "How Effective Is Your Counsel?", and it was a whole lot of discussion and education, and then asking, "How does your council conduct business?", and it was a self-assessment. And so I passed, passed it out to other council members. I'm asking them to, I was going to ask for the same thing, so if this kind of item can be on, on that workshop, I'd like to have that. Okay, that's all I have. Okay, after future agenda items, comes mayor and council comments. Nancy?
I, I don't think I have any other at this time. Go ahead, Wallace.
No, I, I just would wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and Merry Christmas, as we prepare for the new year. And I look forward to it in so many different ways. I think we've got a great council, and I'm looking forward to all, all the challenges that we're going to be facing. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
I'll comment by saying thank you all, and I'm looking forward to working with the council and staff and the public. So I invite you to come and participate. I'm glad to see you here, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. See you on the third Wednesday in January, or at committee meetings before then. So I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.